You guys have made this very complicated.
I will make it easy. Okay, we'll call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe? Councilmember Nguyen?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. Okay, we have one closed session item conference with legal counsel pending litigation. And I'll open oral communications. Is there anyone here that would like to speak?
There are actually two items.
Okay, on that one, and then I'll give them the second one. So they have a choice under the same oral communications. Okay, there are two items conference with legal counsel. Do you want any more definitive than that? Okay, anyone here like to speak on either of them?
Me.
Seeing none, I'll close oral communications and we'll adjourn to the study session.
We'll now call the meeting for the Garden Grove Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, could you please take, well?
Commissioner Dalton?
Here.
Commissioner Doe?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Navarez?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Broadwater?
Here.
Chair Nguyen?
Here.
We'll now go to oral communications. Do we have any public comments? Hearing none, we'll go to Commissioner comments. Oh, I see someone raising his hand.
For the council.
Okay.
Chairwoman Nguyen, can you have the chair of the agency also open the chair of the agency? We can take public comments at this time as well.
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll open up the agency. We're going to have public comments on item 6A of the agency. You want me to do it or her?
No, one, we just wanted the agency open for any oral communications as well. So it'd be both. Hearing none.
Hearing none, we'll now go to the Commissioner comments. Any comments from Commissioners? Hearing none. We'll now go to the consent item 2A, which is to be heard in conjunction with...
No, not quite. This one's just a consent calendar determination of restrictions for the property on Blackbird. It's the Bahia-Moma Home Park, the CCNRs.
Do I hear motion?
Move the item.
Second.
Second.
Call for the vote. We have no public hearing on the...
I'm missing a vote. Your button's not working.
Aw, great.
Maybe it's the mayors. Some vote, one button's not working.
I don't know.
Okay, sorry.
The mayors?
I'm pushing it.
Yeah, they're both pushing.
It's like Morse code.
Yeah, okay.
You might have to do a...
We can do a voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. I'm gonna say your name and...
Okay.
Oh, I can do all things. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
We have no hearing on calendar. We'll now go to the items for consideration. Is item 4A the one that's going to be heard?
That's correct.
Item 4A will be heard in conjunction with the agency.
Item 6A. And Katie Angel is here to give a staff report on this item.
Good evening. Before your consideration tonight are an amended and reseated regulatory agreement and declaration of restricted covenants and an agreement regarding redemption and defeasance of 1996 bonds among the Garden Grove Housing Authority, the Garden Grove Agency for Community Development, Stewart Drive Rose Garden Limited Partnership, and the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company. In 1995, the agency and Burtum Partners, the predecessor to the owner, entered into an affordable housing agreement for the acquisition, rehabilitation, and long-term operation of two affordable housing projects known as Stewart Drive and Rose Garden Apartments. The affordable housing agreement was predicated upon the issuance of a series of bonds issued by the housing authority. Under the affordable housing agreement, the agency's financial assistance included an annual pledge of approximately $600,000 representing security against debt service on the bonds and certain additional funding for part of the rehabilitation of the project. The owner intends to refinance the existing first mortgage for the project and in connection with such refinancing has requested that the bonds be redeemed in full and has agreed to repay in full the agency assistance. To date, the agency has advanced to the owner $2,207,4148 towards the guarantee of the bonds and for additional rehabilitation work pursuant to a second amendment of the affordable housing agreement. The affordable housing agreement and the bond documents required a regulatory agreement to be recorded to conform with any requirements imposed in connection with the issuance of the bonds, tax credits, the affordable housing agreement, community redevelopment law, and the approved financing. In connection with the redemption of the bonds and the owner's repayment in full of the agency assistance, the authority, the agency, owner, and trustee will be required to enter into an amended regulatory agreement to amend and restate the original regulatory agreement and remove the provisions rendered implacable by reason of full repayment of the bonds by the agency assistance. While the amended regulatory agreement terminates the affordable housing agreement and its amendments, the owner covenants that 100% of the project's housing units shall continue to be restricted for occupancy to very, to low-income tenants with at least 10% of those units restricted to very low-income tenants for the full affordability period that continues until July 14, 2032. In order to facilitate the redemption of the bonds, the payoff of the owner's existing first mortgage loan, and to repay the full agency assistance, the owner, agency, and authority will enter into an agreement regarding redemption and defeasance of 1996 bonds. This redemption agreement calls for the giving of notice of redemption, the borough's indemnity of the city, the authority and the agency, and the full repayment of agency assistance in the amount of $2,274,148 and the payment of legal and administrative fees of $125,000. Staff recommends that the housing authority adopt the attached authority resolution authorizing the execution of the redemption agreement and the amended regulatory agreement and authorize the agent, I'm sorry, and authorize the authority director to make necessary changes to the amended regulatory agreement and redemption agreement as necessary. Staff recommends that the agency adopt the agency resolution authorizing the execution of the agreement related to the, I'm sorry, authorizing the execution of the agreement regarding redemption of the Garden Grove Housing Authority multifamily revenue bonds, the amended regulatory agreement, and related implementing documents relative to the bond redemption and the agency tax increment, and authorize the agency director to make any necessary changes to the regulatory agreement and redemption agreement. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Are we ready for...
Yeah, we'll make a motion from the housing authority first.
Do I hear a motion?
Move it.
Are we calling a concurrent vote?
No, we'll do a separate vote. Are we working or not?
You're pushing, huh?
Yeah.
All right, we'll have to do a real call vote.
Commissioner Dalton?
Yes.
Commissioner Doe?
Here.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Navarez?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Broadwater?
Yes.
Chair Nguyen?
Yes.
And now Chairman Broadwater, if you can ask for a vote for just the agency members.
Okay, for the agency members, I'd like to hear a motion for 6A.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second call for the vote. And I think you better do that.
Member Dalton?
Yes.
Member Doe?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nguyen?
Yes.
Chair Broadwater?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you can recess the agency and then we'll complete the housing authority.
At this time, we'll recess the agency.
We'll now continue with the matters from Commissioners and Directors.
I was looking at my picture.
Hearing none, I'll call for the adjournment of the housing authority. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, August 24, 2010, at 6:30 in the council chambers.
Thank you.
The mayor's.
Just the mayor's.
Does the mayor's bulb in here?
It's just the mayor's.
Now I touched it and...
But does it go on?
You want to try it now and see? Kathy?
Yeah.
Let's try it and see. Everybody press yes.
Yep, works now.
I have to give credit to Councilwoman Gina Nguyen. She saw that mine was pinched on the corner and took care of it, so thank you. I knew somebody up here was mechanically inclined. Okay, I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
Here.
Councilmember...
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. Okay, we had two closed session items and there was no reportable action taken. We'll have the invocation now by Keith Jones, the Public Works Director, and the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Nguyen. Can I see we have some presentations?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like Keith Jones to make the very special presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council is pleased to shine the community spotlight on the resigning Ms. Garden Grove and Ms. Garden Grove's outstanding teen in their courts of honor. They proudly served and represented the city and community during their reign from August 2009 to August 2010. Will Ms. Garden Grove DeeDee Setia, Garden Grove's outstanding teen, Janee Duran, along with runners-up Leah Cecil, Veronica Williams, Alyssa Alex, and Tweet Ho, please come forward? As an official preliminary to the Miss America Pageant, the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant distributes over $5,000 in scholarships to local young ladies each year. In addition to performing their talent competition, each contestant delivers a platform based on a current issue she feels is important. Ms. Garden Grove 2010, DeeDee Setia, is an economics graduate from the University of California-Irvine. She was the first in her family to obtain a college degree and plans to pursue a master's degree in business administration. A talented Polynesian dancer, she performed a Tahitian dance and a fire poi ball routine in her competitions. The platform was educating youth about the importance of financial responsibility. She was able to speak to more than 500 elementary school students about the purchasing power of money and teaching them how to budget. She was sponsored by Grove Body Shop. The city extends a special thank you to DeeDee for her model leadership as Ms. Garden Grove 2010. Representing the city and community with Ms. Garden Grove were her court members, Leah Cecil and Veronica Williams. Leah is Pacific High School graduate now attending Cal State Fullerton as a music performance major. She is an accomplished harpist and was sponsored by Garden Grove Rotary Club. Leah will be competing in the Miss Garden Grove 2011 competition with a platform of compassion for the convalescing. Veronica Williams currently attends the University of California-Irvine and is a double major in pre-medicine and drama. She's a talented vocalist sponsored by the Colony of Performing Arts. Her platform was water-wise drowning prevention and awareness. The city acknowledges their outstanding service to the Garden Grove community. In addition to Ms. Garden Grove in her court, the council would also like to recognize Garden Grove's outstanding teen 2010, Janee Duran, and princesses Alyssa Alex and Tweet Ho. Last month, Janee competed in the California State Teen Pageant in Fresno and placed in the top 10. Janee will be a senior at the Crystal Cathedral High School. She is a talented vocalist and has been performing in musical theater productions at school including Into the Woods, Oklahoma, and Annie Warbucks. She is also a member of the National Honors Society. Janee parlayed her platform of donated life into a new role as Donate Life Ambassador for the Costa Mesa Department of Motor Vehicles through which she raises awareness about organ and tissue donation. The city applauds all of Janee's exemplary efforts as an inspiration to others. Alyssa Alex was sponsored by Brandywine Homes and was crowned princess in the Miss Garden Grove Outstanding Teen Court. This year, as an incoming junior at Rancho Alameda's High School, she will compete again with a sponsorship from the Kiwanis Club of Greater Garden Grove. Tweet Ho is also a student at Rancho Alameda's High School. She performed a monologue in her competition. Her platform was scoliosis awareness. Tweet was sponsored by Garden Grove Body, Grove Body Shop. The city expresses its gratitude for their efforts in the Garden Grove community. Over the past year, Ms. Garden Grove and Garden Grove's outstanding teen, along with their courts, have participated in a variety of community events and service projects. They include the Tree Lighting Celebration, Public Works Open House, Strawberry Festival, and the Garden Grove Community Foundation's Free Summer Concert Series. At this time, the mayor and the city council would like to present the Miss Garden Grove Scholarship Pageant outgoing courts with certificates and mementos in recognition of their volunteerism in the community during their 2010 reign. The city council wishes you the best and hopes that your aspirations continue leading you to recognized successes.
Okay, thank you. If any of you or all of you are welcome to say a few words at the podium.
First off, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of myself, DeeDee, and our court. This is a big honor and I feel very privileged to be honored by Garden Grove, the Garden Grove community. I know I don't only speak for myself, but I speak for my fellow friends and court members, that serving Garden Grove was truly an honor. It's a very personable community and not many cities have so many events that we have been able to attend to, so that was a lot of fun. Thank you again. This truly isn't ours, and I already said that, but it really is. I've never done this before, so when my ED Stacy told me that we would be honored by Garden Grove, I was like, hmm, that's cool. But thank you again, and this is fun. I've never seen a council meeting before, so thank you. And Janie left me. Just to reiterate what Janee said, we want to thank the city of Garden Grove for your continued support of our program. It's been really a pleasure to serve this community and then also to be Mayor Dalton's picture buddies this year. We've really enjoyed that, so thank you guys all so much.
Thank you. Well, there's a lot of talent walking out the door there, and believe me, if you went to any of the events at the Strawberry Festival, there's so much talent in these young ladies, it makes me proud to be in the city of Garden Grove. Thank you again very much. Okay, now we'll have open oral communications for the council and the agency. Jim Penner?
Well, I think he was just available for the 7B public hearing on the Crystal Cathedral.
Okay. All right, Roy Alvarado?
Good evening, City Council. This is a first time for me as well, for the city of Garden Grove. My name is Roy Alvarado. I live at 3402 West 7th Street in the city of Santa Ana. My house faces the Willowick Golf Course, and that's what I've come to speak about. Number one is that I want to thank the city of Garden Grove to act and to put on our new fence that we have now surrounding the backside of, or one side of the property. It's been many years since, you know, we had some improvements in there, and we're very appreciative. I'm of most of them, I'm very appreciative. There is some little, how do I say this, other than not being rude or anything, but we stopped that at Mark, which was a growing part with the city and our community. And we have issues in this neighborhood. This neighborhood happens to be one of the worst neighborhoods in the city of Santa Ana and in the county of Orange as well. We have a lot of gang activity, which we, as the community, is known as Santa Nita, and our neighborhood association are being very aggressive, going after these families and these kids. Somebody needs to be responsible for it. And the reason I come to speak with is that we have a nice fence and we want to see how we can preserve it as long as possible or forever, is, you know, as long as we can. But the track record of this park and the management under the Dabalan, I can't remember his full name, but Dabalan, our experience dealing with him has been very negative and very negative in the sense of what it portrays to the city of Garden Grove. And we've come to the point that we're going to be very aggressive with the city of Santa Ana because they're not protecting their citizens. And so we want to be good neighbors and I want my city to take care of us, but we have this problem that we were trying to, as this fence was being built, that there were going to be some openings on this perimeter for the city Santa Ana Police Department to go after these crooks that use your property as a hating to hide out and a place to hang out. They cannot hang out at Composino Park anymore because soon as they're there, we call the police and they show up. But they end up going into your property and using your bathrooms as well, the one that they have on the north, south end of your property, and we can't seem to get in there. And your management, business management that holds that business is not willing to really been working with us. And since we're now in contact with you guys, we'd like to see how we can grow continuous because we're going after other businesses in this community that is making us a black eye of Orange County, and we're trying to change that image. There are people that do live there that, you know, believe that we have a nice neighborhood and we want to improve more. So I'm here to see how we can work and see how we can adjust this fence, that we can preserve it as long as we can, because your track record as if the fence that you would have been able to see it, you would have seen it, it was just cut puzzles everywhere, you know? And people were coming in and out of that property like there's no business. So even if this fence is sealed so that you don't have any people trespassing on your property, it's not going to stop the crooks and these gangs from doing it. And it stops the Santa Ana Police Department to chase them onto your property to get them out. We're hoping maybe even considering maybe you guys, if you don't want to put that in there, maybe have a security guard there 24 hours to be chasing out these people and calling the police department to get them out of there. Because it's, it's, it's a, it's a hating, and we're going after, like I said, other look homes and families in this neighborhood, very aggressive. So we're trying to see how we can reach out as for city Garden Grove that owns this property that is in the city of Santa Ana and affects some of us as citizens there. So my name is Roy Alvarado, and if you need any information regarding this issue here, I'd be very appreciative and willing to work with the city and city manager about these things.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll have someone get back to you. I know that the fence was an issue because I discussed that with Keith Jones recently, but we'll have someone get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lee Ostendorf?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just wanted to come down in person and invite you to the grand opening of the farmer's market this Sunday. We'll be open 9 to 2, and the ribbon cutting that the Chamber of Commerce is helping me with will be at noon. And so I want you all to come down if you can.
Okay.
And thank you so much for your support.
You bet. Thank you very much. Charles Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, and staff. I noticed on the consent items that the city is signing off on the Lomé-Nuland Project. And I know that the business owners in that area, that intersection of Nuland and Westminster, are delighted that this project is finally completed because it was almost devastating to their businesses for a while. for a while. The only thing I'm concerned about with that is something that I've brought up before and that the Public Works Director, Keith Jones, has addressed and taken care of, that was that sinkhole on Westminster Boulevard in front of Taco Bell. And it has been patched. It doesn't appear to be sinking again, so hopefully this time the patch will work. But I'm wondering if, in the future, there does develop another problem with that particular spot, if the contractor would still be responsible, or if the city is going to take responsibility from that point on when it's signed off. The other issue I have is regarding the ordinance on shopping carts. If you steal someone's car, no one knows if you're going to keep it, or sell it, or maybe just go for a joyride. Now, if you go to a store and you take one of their shopping carts home, that is the same as stealing. You are depriving that store of something that they use for other customers. And I feel it is rather unfair to be putting the onus of this on the stores themselves. This ordinance somewhat reminds me of our immigration enforcement policy in this country. People that steal shopping carts are breaking the law. They should be ticketed, they should be fined, but I don't know that this is a practical issue for law enforcement. There's only so much that they can do. Some of the stores that have shopping carts, for instance, there's an Albertson on Harbor Boulevard, just south of, I'm sorry, on Harbor, just south of Garden Grove Boulevard, and that shopping center extends for almost a quarter of a mile. Now, is that store going to be responsible for installing an electronic device all the way around the perimeter for a quarter of a mile? That seems like quite a bit for that store to take on. There's others that also have large areas. But there's some, some stores that have shopping carts that only have a small parking area, and they're not connected to other stores, and their parking lot is intersected by streets, so it would be easier for them to install something on their perimeter. On that basis, I wonder if this ordinance is going to take into account the variance in the properties that these stores are going to have to maintain their monitoring system on. Now, if, for instance, it applies equally to both large and small properties, that seems to be very unfair to those stores that have adjacent other stores and other facilities to their stores, so that they would have a much more difficult time in installing this. Now, if you're going to give a break to those larger ones and maybe say, okay, since you have such a large area, we're not going to let you, or not going to make you do this, well, what about the smaller property stores? Are they going to say, well, if you're not going to make them do it, and you're going to make us do it, isn't that discriminatory? These are issues that I think need to be looked at very carefully to see if this thing can be implemented and if it can be done fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close our oral communication. Do any council members have any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll recess the council and we'll go to the agency. At this time, we reconvene the agency. Let's go directly to consent items.
Mr. Chairman, you got two items, 4A and 4B, and it's recommended that these items be acted on simultaneously.
Entertainer motion. Move it.
Second.
Call for the vote. Okay, we have no public hearings.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Get ahead of her every once in a while. We have no public hearings. Items for consideration have actually been taken care of. Matters from agency members and director. Anything?
None.
Hearing none, we will adjourn until Tuesday, August the 24th. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll reconvene the council meeting and go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, you have items 6A through 6J, and it's recommended that these items be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
I'd like to pull 6A. Do I have motion for the rest?
Move. Balance.
Got motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Five yes votes.
Okay, 6A is a resolution honoring the 15th anniversary of the Main Street Car Show. And Gary Brown's here from Main Street, and I'm going to go ahead and read this, read some of the wherashes, and then I'll present it to you, Gary. This is a resolution from the city of Garden Grove honoring the 15th anniversary of the Garden Grove Friday Night Main Street Car Show. And it says, whereas in October of 1995, merchants along Garden Grove's historic downtown Main Street business area organized and held the very first Friday Night Car Show as a means of sparking the economic viability and visitor popularity to the area. And whereas the first car show attracted nearly 50 participating show cars and drew an estimated 150 to 200 spectators, and whereas by July 2000, the Friday Night Car Show had nearly doubled in size with over 100 unique show cars and 500 to 600 loyal spectators in attendance, prompting the newly formed Garden Grove Downtown Business Association to assume management and sponsorship of the event. And whereas now known as the Friday Night Main Street Car Show, it attracts an average of 200 to 300 show vehicles each week, along with thousands of spectators from all over the world. And whereas September 29th, 2010, will mark the 15th anniversary of the popular community event. And whereas a car show has been the topic of many news articles in local and national news media, including Popular Mechanics and television shows, national and international automobile trade publications, and several internet websites. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Garden Grove City Council does hereby honorably celebrate the 15th anniversary of the garden show, the Garden Grove Main Street Car Show, and supports the Garden Grove Downtown Business Association's claim that historic Main Street is truly the classic car capital of the world. Gary, and you've been involved and responsible for so much of this, would you please come forward and I'll present the resolution. Congratulations. If you turn around, we'll get a picture with you with that resolution. Go ahead.
Can you see her?
One, two, three. One, two.
You'd like to say a few words, Gary, please feel free. You got about five minutes. It may seem like an hour, though.
First of all, thank you for the city, the city staff that has worked hard on this, along with a lot of the merchants on Main Street. This is something for the whole street and for the car people that come down every week, many of them for 15 years. And we're going to kick this thing off, the 15th anniversary, on August 26th at one of the community foundations, the Concert in the Park. We will have a car show over there, and then we will start our 15th anniversary shows the 1st of September, the whole month of September with special awards. We'd love to get as many of the city people down there. Some, I know are car guys that would love to have some of your cars down there, and we appreciate everything you guys have done for us over the years. Especially the city manager and his office helped us out here the last few weeks, and we're very appreciative down there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your first public hearing is to consider a plan unit development for the development of 53 townhouses at Century and Taft, and Lee Moreno is here to give you a staff report on this item.
Before we start, I'm going to step down and not participate on this item.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. The item before you tonight is a request to transmit a planning commission recommendation for city council approval of a plan unit development and a development agreement for the construction of 53 townhomes on approximately three-acre site located on the northwest corner of Taft Street and Century Boulevard. On January 1st of this year, the planning commission approved site plan SP 45710 and tentative tract map 17369, and recommended city council approval of plan unit development PUD 12510, changing the zoning of the subject property from community center-specific plan, community commercial district, to plan unit development, along with the development agreement number DA 18110. The project does propose the construction of 53 three-story townhomes with attached garages that will range in size from approximately 1,600 square feet to 2,200 square feet. The site's main point of access will be from Century Boulevard with a secondary access from an alleyway that is located on the northerly side of the project. The alley would provide direct access to the garages that face the alley as well as to Taft Street. The homes will be serviced by a 25-foot-wide private road, and a total of 143 parking spaces are provided, which exceeds the code's minimum parking requirements by 23 spaces. Open space for the development will be comprised of a network of passive open space areas within the interior of the site, along with private patio areas in the form of balconies and front porch areas. Additionally, in order to provide the code-required open space area, create some active open space and meet the general plans policies that encourage the creation of both private and public open spaces, the applicant has provided an urban trail on the outside boundaries of the project along Taft and Century that will connect the urban trail to the interior open spaces. The urban trail will provide distance markers, lighting, landscaping, and will also foster a more active open space area. The distance markers and lighting along the decorative paving will also be included within the project boundaries. The proposed PUD zoning designation establishes development standards and uses that are specific to a specific project. The rezoning of the property to plan unit development is necessary since the community commercial district of the specific plan doesn't allow multifamily residential developments. However, it should be noted that the city's general plan land use designation for the property would allow the development of higher-density residential properties, such as the one before you tonight. The general plan also allows for residential, commercial, mixed-use developments in both the vertical and horizontal configuration. Since the subject's property zoning is not consistent with the city's general plan land use designation, the only way for the project to move forward is to change the zoning to plan unit development. Finally, the government code provides authority for the city to enter into a development agreement. The development agreement will ensure that the applicant can build the project as approved within a period of four years. In return, the city will receive a development agreement payment not to exceed $101,548. Payment of the development agreement fee will be paid incrementally at the time that the certificate of occupancy is issued for each onsite building. Excuse me. With that, it is recommended that the city council introduce the first readings of two ordinances. The first is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting a negative declaration and approving plan unit development number PUD 12510, changing the zoning designation from CCSP CC43, Community Center-Specific Plan, Community Commercial District, to plan unit development number PUD 12510. And the second is entitled, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Adopting a Negative Declaration and Adopting Development Agreement Number DA 18110 between Brandywine Homes Developer and the City of Garden Grove. And that would conclude staff's report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, we'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Peggy Bergen.
I can't complain about the parking, because you already told me it was in excess of what we need. But my question is, once again, if this was not a PUD, how many residential units would be allowed in that space? And will the traffic report actually indicate that this is going to have more than 500 trips a day, coming off of what I can visibly see is one access point mainly to a fairly busy street already? And I do feel very insulted by the idea that you're going to have 150, or 50 units, give or take, with no active green space. I do not consider a trail walking through a place being green space. Some of these people will have children. I can almost guarantee it. Therefore, there is absolutely no place for them to go out and visibly play. And there's not, it's a far enough a walk away from the library park that very few people will be taking their children over there to play. So we're in making these people be housed bound most of the time. I do not find inactive green space to be actual green space. There's no, there does not appear to be any pool here. There's not appear to be any gymnasium and that type of things. So these people, I don't care how big the place is, 1,600 square feet with a two-car garage, which, since that's included in your 143 parking spaces, the garage will be full of cars, hopefully. So that's just kind of my idea. I would like to find out how come everything that's being tried to be approved or approved in the city is a PUD, because they have to deviate from the norm of what our forefathers set forth as a city lot, 7,200 square feet for per residence. That's my only question. I'm getting kind of tired of PUDs and brick walls. It's not very attractive. Thank you. And also, if that's how it would look fulfilled, it will not age very well. Those buildings are very time-sensitive to now, and we're hoping they'll last more than 10 or 15 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this? Mr. Borisic? Was there 53 townhomes? 53, no. I thought I heard near 100 or something mentioned, but it was 53. Okay.
It's 53, Mayor, yes. Mayor and Council, Jim Borisic, Brandywine Homes. Thanks for the opportunity this evening to have this proposed new development considered. We're really proud of what has, what is being presented in Century Village this evening. It represents many, many months, and I don't know how many man-hours of collaborative effort between pretty much your entire city staff and our development team to bring it to this culmination this evening. We really believe that this, this development, if approved by you this evening, will be an additional and major impetus to enhancing the downtown city core and perhaps the entire community. We thank you once again for your consideration. We have our architect, Brian Sevius of KTGY here this evening, and as well as myself, and we'll be pleased to answer any specific questions you have. We obviously reviewed the staff report in detail. We concur with all of their requested conditions of approval.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Borisic? Okay, then I'll close our oral communications at this point. Council members? Have a motion? And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Mr. Mayor, we'll assume that the first motion was for 7A1. We'll need a second motion for 7A2.
Okay. Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received. Four yes votes.
Okay, would someone, see if Mr. Jones can return? There he is. Okay.
Presto.
7B.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Your second public hearing is 7B, which is also a consideration of a revision to a plan unit development project involving the Crystal Cathedral. And Maria Parra is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight, it's a request to amend the permitted uses of plan unit development number PUD 13399 revised 05 to allow general and medical offices, medical clinics, and trade schools. The property is a home base for the Crystal Cathedral ministries. The PUD allows for religious use- The PUD allows for religious uses, daycare, private school, cemeteries, and supportive church offices and uses. The proposal will facilitate the Crystal Cathedral's objective of possibly selling the property located at 13280 Chapman Avenue, which is improved with a four-story family life center building for the purpose of having the new general office, medical, and trade schools occupying this building. The family life center currently houses the Crystal Cathedral's private school. If the building is sold, the Crystal Cathedral will continue to lease space within the existing building to continue to operate the school until another school facility is constructed. The PUD provides sufficient onsite parking to accommodate the existing uses and the proposed request. A reciprocal access and parking agreement will be required for the PUD. A traffic generation study and traffic impact study were prepared and reviewed by the city traffic engineer, which determined that the introduction of the proposed uses will not have a significant impact to the surrounding streets. The proposed uses are consistent with the general plan land use designation that allows for educational and medical uses. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council adopt a negative declaration and introduce the first reading of the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Approving a Revision to Plan Unit Development Number PUD-13399 revised 05 revised 09 to modify the permitted uses to allow general and medical offices, medical clinics, and trade schools. This concludes my presentation, and I can ask any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
There's nobody here from the...
Well, no, these, you're here, I don't know that he wants to, he was here to answer questions, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you wanna, do you wanna hear from him?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I'm surprised that nobody got up and spoke.
I'm, she did such a nice job presenting that I'm here to answer questions.
He's here if you have any questions.
Yeah. Let me ask you a question, are you gonna fence this off and make it's two separate properties?
That's possible. It depends on, depends on who goes in there and what type of uses is put on that property.
How do you decide how the parking's gonna be shared?
Reciprocal parking agreement, just to make sure that there can be code of whoever goes into that building, that they can meet code because that's part of the plan unit development. And we don't use all of our parking now. We, a lot of our spaces are leased now to UCI, and we'll cut that back, the amount of uses that they have, so we could accommodate whoever goes into that building.
Gee, it seems like just yesterday we were there when they dedicated that building.
Yeah, 1990.
Yeah.
1990, 20 years.
Well, maybe it's the other one I'm thinking about.
The other one, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking about the newer one, yeah.
Yeah, nothing's happening with that one.
Do you have an idea what might go into the building?
No, we don't know. We don't even know if we're gonna sell the building. But it's, it's an option that if, if the building were to be sold, those are the most likely uses. Would either just be general office, right now it's labeled as church office, we just, if you take the church off, and it's just general office. And the other interest is obviously because of UCI down the street, is general medical office. So there's been a lot of interest from, you know, local doctors and that type of thing wanting to house in that building, because then they can service UCI.
How are you gonna get the statues out of it?
There's only one.
I thought there were four of them downstairs.
No, there's, there's only one.
It's another building.
That's another building.
Yeah, with the four of them.
Oh, you must be wrong. I mean, right, because I'm certainly, is the building we borrow every, every once in a while, is that...
That's the building.
That's the building, yeah.
That's the building.
Didn't have four statues in the bottom of it? Billy, no, no, no.
No, those have all been moved.
They have been moved.
They moved.
They were there once, though.
At one time, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay. Now you made it, now you made him feel good.
Yeah, they've been moved. They've been moved.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have several questions.
Go ahead.
So I think that answered, by the way, you were just saying that, but so you're not under contract with any group already that has some sort of proposed use of what they're...
No, no, and, you know, we don't know if we're gonna sell it, but if we do, it's more likely. And the process to do something like this takes, you know, upwards of a year.
Yeah, and this just adds flexibility to the ability to market to a different...
Correct, correct.
And do you envision there's any way that the school stays there together with medical office uses and other uses, or is that...
It's possible. It's possible.
The way it's currently configured, it doesn't, I don't know how that would work unless it was sort of...
The way it's currently, we'd have to change some configurations, but yeah, that could work. That could work. There's been some discussion on that with, you know, with, you know, with different schools, trade schools, that type of thing also.
How big would the lot be?
A lot, it is its own parcel. You can see it outlined in green up there on that sheet. There are actually three parcels of the Crystal Cathedral. There's one that has the church and the church buildings, and there's a, a separate parcel for that center round building that was dedicated a couple of years ago. And then the, the building we're talking about there in the upper left-hand corner, is it, it is its own lot. I think it's about six acres. Maria might know, it's in the paperwork, but I don't have it with me. I think it's about six acres.
Six acres?
Yeah, I suppose to that.
We were talking today, just going through the remnants of that whole project, what did it cost to build that bridge and then take it down?
The, the bridge that goes across Chapman Avenue to the building that we saw the Kaiser...
It used to go across.
I do not know what it cost to build it. I know it costs very little to take it down. So I don't remember what it cost to build it. But it was just, it was a single span, you know, what do you call it, I-bar, or you know, I-beam, you know, bridge. It was a very simple bridge. Could've held on to it because UCI's gonna put one up down the street that goes across to that empty lot.
Good.
You know, because that's where they're gonna build their parking garage, is over in that other empty lot by the five freeway.
Okay. Is there a plan on where the school and preschool would relocate?
We have, we have underutilized space on that, on that campus currently, in a number of office buildings. So the, the school is dictated, the size of the school is completely dictated upon how much Sunday school space we need. Because the idea is, when you have a church of a certain size, you need Sunday school space to accommodate the kids on Sunday. During the week, those, those classrooms sit empty. So you have a school to fill up those classrooms and better use of space. So if you have a certain amount of Sunday school space, that's how big your school is. So it's not like the school is wagging the dog, so to speak. It's, you know, however much space you need for Sunday school, that's how big your school is. So.
Interesting. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move the issue.
Second.
Got motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Adams for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, 9A is an award of contract to AKM Consulting Engineers for Well Number 31, and Keith Jones is here to give a staff report on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. The city awarded a drilling-construction contract for Well 31 in its Lamson Reservoir on June 22, 2010. It's expected that the drilling will be completed in February of 2011. And now is the time to start the design for the equipping of that well. We sent out a requested proposal from six firms to provide professional engineering services for that task. Two responded, AKM and Somus. Four staff members met with both teams and conducted interviews and rated them, and AKM came out the strongest. And so we've met with AKM and negotiated an agreement for its services. This is coming out of our water funds that were appropriated as part of the budget, and there's no impact to the general fund. So therefore, it is recommended the city council award the contract for professional engineering services to AKM Consulting Engineers for Well 31 Equipping Project and authorize the city manager to sign and execute a professional service agreement with AKM Consulting Engineers for engineering services for the Well 31 Equipping Project in the amount of $398,316. Completes my report, be happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move the issue.
Second.
Have motion, second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, ordinance for a second reading.
Mr. Mayor, item 10A is ordinance number 2777, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove repealing sections 8.30, 1.30, and 8.30, 1.50 of Chapter 30 of Title 8 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and adding Chapter 31 to Title 8 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to shopping carts.
Well, I believe that we should do everything we can to keep those shopping carts off the streets and back in the store where they belong. And I think the stores need to take some interest in those carts themselves. I believe that the city at one time had carts all over. You couldn't go anywhere, there're carts all over the place. I know they went to, I know the stores went to Sacramento and got a law passed that said we had to be very tender with dealing with their carts. But I, I think this is an improvement, and I certainly am going to support it.
You know, just for information, I can remember in the 1960s, when I lived in San Francisco, Safeway Store, they configured the exit of the store to where you could only bring that cart out the store, and you had to drive up and take your own groceries out of the cart and put them in the car. I mean, they were, they were doing that then because of the cost of shopping carts. And there's a lot of them now that have a system where if you, if you go off past a magnetic field, the wheels lock and all those kinds of things. But I think you're right, there's nothing worse than seeing a nice neighborhood and somebody dropped off a few carts. And again, I think you pointed out, Mr. Broadwater, a few weeks ago, you know, we have a heck of a time when we were collecting them to get the stores to even come and get their shopping carts.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe we oughta buy a compressor, and, but nobody would go for that, so.
Okay, any other comments?
Do we have a plan to implement some of the violations or the requirements for training and the store implementing their own plans?
I'm not sure I understood the question, but...
We are imposing a lot of requirements on the stores, so how are we going to follow up on that?
We'll first start off with letters and then follow up by face-to-face meetings with them and educating them and talking to them about how we can do this. I mean, our, our goal isn't to penalize them, our goal is to reduce this $48,000 a year that the city is paying for a contractor. And so I think through education, just face-to-face meetings. And again, we've met with the stores, a lot of the big stores already, and they like it because they want to do it to save their carts. Corporate who would pay for it doesn't want to pay for it until there is an ordinance. Then that gives the, the manager of the store the impetus to say, now there's an ordinance, you need to pay for it. So we'll work that out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Move the item.
Got a motion? Second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, matters. Mr. Broadwater?
Oh, I just, I think the city's doing good, looks great around town. I think we don't have as much graffiti as we've had in the past, and I hope whoever's stopped doing the graffiti, I'm glad, I'm thankful that they stopped. And it looks good. It looks, our city's looking better all the time.
Ms. Swin?
Yes, I have a couple of traffic matters. A few months ago, I was concerned about the Brookhurst and Westminster intersection going east towards Dawson, where there's a lot of accidents, and it's hard to get in and out. And staff was gonna look into that, gonna get an update on that when you get a chance. Brookhurst and Westminster towards Dawson. And then I have an anonymous letter with concern for traffic noises all kinds of hours, especially during, during the early mornings. I think they have drag car racing between Gilbert and Magnolia on Chapman, and they're asking for our police assistance in maybe patrolling the area during those hours. And also, I want to remind everyone to buy in Garden Grove. It's a, still a good program, and we need it. And there's a lot of new businesses in the city that needs our support, and they're very reasonable. I've shopped everywhere, but I always end up buying in Garden Grove because that's where the best deals are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Well, unfortunately, my father's property that he owns in the city got graffitied again a few weeks ago, but the only good news was that they got out there within the same day and cleaned it up, and so they're always right on top of it. But he's got a particular property in the city that has frontage onto an arterial and gets hit pretty frequently. Anyways, other than that, I'm happy anniversary, Mayor, and Sandy, and happy birthday, Peggy.
Thank you. Mr. Doe?
Thank you. Yes, please convey our happy birthday wishes to your wife, Mr. Broadwater. And Mayor, I, one of the pleasures this year definitely is gotten to know your family, extended family more, and seeing your beautiful family and grandkids. I, and with your anniversary coming up, you, like I have said before to Mr. Broadwater when he celebrated his anniversary, that's an inspiration to, to us younger generation. We, this is what we aspire to. We, we, this is old traditional values that should be reminded, and it's good that we celebrate it. So happy anniversary.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday to Peggy Broadwater, and happy anniversary to Sandy. And we'll adjourn the council meeting. The next meeting will be Tuesday, August 24, 2010, at 5:30 PM here. Thank you.